Okay, why don't we get started? We get out and enjoy the weather. I'd like to welcome you all to the school committee meeting of May 1st. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'd like to have one addendum to that. A consideration under committee discussion votes to be taking of the Boston Museum of Science trip and the Veritas trip. So we can consider those. So we'll start off with any comments from the public? Saying none?
No.
There's mail in the air.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions and I know it's on, oh, it is on tonight's agenda. I just had some questions and concerns about policy GBVBD, the online fundraising and solicitations.
Why don't you wait until we get there? Yeah.
We have some answers probably.
Yeah.
I don't mind waiting, I just didn't know if that would...
No, it's better to bring that up when we discuss it. Anything else? Okay. Presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Veritas, Mr. Bucky?
I'm not gonna take much time because I'm gonna turn it over to the students. We have long been proud of Veritas and their many accomplishments, but this year they have undertaken some pretty spectacular things that I thought was worthy of school committee's attention and consideration and for them to share with you some of the really remarkable work that they have done in addition to producing an award-winning newspaper. So I will turn it over to the students to share some of their successes and maybe even a little video presentation for you. So Caroline Richards, editor.
If you want us to have the video first or...
You can come up here.
Oh, we're good.
Sure.
Yeah, that just gives you a microphone. In case they're recording.
I could bring your name with Natalie if you wanted.
Yeah. All right, yes. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here. I think we're just gonna talk about our two things notably we've done. One, we organized the walkout to protest gun control and gun violence in schools specifically and kind of gun violence in general, which was really successful and really amazing to see. And then we took it a step further and we went to Washington DC to the Walk for Our Lives, which was also amazing. We had Sarah Erickson come with us and Chris Cothran, which was really fun. Chris Cothran is a Latin teacher and Sarah Erickson works in the main office. So that was really good. And should we show the video first?
Sure.
Sure.
Help.
Good morning, Kennedy test students. The walkout is planned for today in recognition of the lives lost in the school shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida is scheduled to take place today as planned at 10:00 AM.
We fully support you and it's time for the adults of the country to let you leave. We empower you, we support you.
I think we're gonna make a big statement.
This is really a nationwide effort of students making sure that our voices are heard. Unfortunately, Washington is so entrenched right now that logical discourse seems to have taken a back burner to partisan politics.
This represents our rights as students to express our opinions freely and without fear. Anyone who wishes to participate in the walkout is now invited together in all of the will.
Seventeen people were murdered by a nineteen-year-old illegal purchase firearm. Those are seventeen deaths that could have been avoided had there been a eighth restriction on the purchase of firearms. Had there been an accurate check, it would have prevented a mentally unstable pursuit with the laws for purchasing firearms. Had there been opinion on assault weapons, weapons that were designed to kill people.
We should be able to possibly explore some of that.
A student walked into their school, he's being worried about the afterlife, he's worried that they might not walk out.
We are knowing that the violence is ongoing, we know where it starts.
Auditions in Washington, person being placed back on our lives. The president battles down with the special interest groups, the National Rightful Association. The NRA does not hunger for the young men for too long. It is time for change.
As a teenager, married to his father, who were you? As a teenager, part of our group, after being born. As a teenager, John Warren burned the eye of a hundred and four in a station. As a teenager, I was in the grace of the world, I was hired, it's real important. They will be in this case, there is a difference, it's ten days. The answer is no, you can't change, you can't change, the right of the brother is possible without change, the love cannot change, the mind cannot change.
We are every woman, we are the ones that are going to divide the country and we are the ones that are going to change. It's not only the first time this students and other people have had the conversation going, it's the first time anyone has. To show the power our weakness has, we that you have power, so let me make sure it's not wasted.
Can I ask before we get to, why did you folks make the video too?
Did.
Very nicely done.
Thank you. That was great.
Especially Mookie Richards and Henry Dupont, our broadcast.
Very nicely done. Is it available somewhere in our school websites?
I think it's on Facebook and it's on our website, Veritas, which is linked on our website.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah. That's also another thing we added this year. NCTV reached out to us about doing a broadcast section of our newspaper and in previous years editors had kind of been pushing it aside and I think it's got to a point where video and photography is so important and the visual aspect of news is so important nowadays that like we couldn't keep pushing it away, I think. And Mookie, my brother, is super interested in videography and film, so is Henry Dupont. So they've been putting together videos kind of all year.
Yeah, that's great. The cutaways, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, they did a great job.
They did do a good job.
Yep.
Yeah. So then we also wanted to touch on our trip down to Washington. I personally was not there, but if you want to speak a little more to that.
It was, I had never been to a march before, so it was really interesting, especially in DC because that's the highest level, that's you know, the capital, so that's where all the big marching happens. And I was a little bit nervous at first because I'd been warned of counter protesters and you know, people protesting, kind of them thinking us that we are taking away their Second Amendment. But when I got there, it was really, really empowering experience and I didn't see a single counter protester the entire time. And what was really amazing about it is that it was all kids and you could see all the kids, all the school groups, a lot of them had matching T-shirts, a lot of them were kids whose schools had been affected by gun violence. And I was really inspired by the number of speakers that came because it wasn't just kids from Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, it was kids from Compton and Detroit and Chicago, which was really interesting because that's heavy places where gun violence is happening. And to see those kids come to and see that they were affected, not just kids from Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School and past shootings was really interesting and really inspiring. And Martin Luther King Jr.'s granddaughter was there, which was really awesome. She spoke, I think she was like nine years old and she came out and spoke and she was amazing. So it was really, it was a really good experience and to be there with a group of peers who are also have the same opinion as me and to be there with a group of people who I'm really close to was really good moment and it's really powerful, so.
Any other questions for Fair?
Through the chair. So how do we keep the conversation going? And I think I've had this conversation with you. My worry is that we will, as a country, do what we do and let this go into the recesses of our mind as a sort of a defense mechanism. How, how do the kids plan to keep the conversation going?
I think it comes in just the everyday stating that you're, that this is your opinion. And we also recently in an issue of Veritas had how to register to vote, which I think is really, really important, especially for the seniors who are turning eighteen who can register. I registered to vote recently, very excited. But I think just teaching kids about the importance of politics and the importance that, the important thing that they also have a voice and they're part of this country, which I think they can often be felt as pushed aside, especially because they can't vote, they feel kind of that they're not part of this community and the ability to change things. And I think it comes in the everyday empowerment of young people who will be voting and running the country in later years, which is what I think the school does a good job of doing. And I think Veritas has done a pretty good job of supporting the opinions of kids and letting people express their opinions and...
If I may? Just thanks to the administration and staff too for supporting this. Recognize our advisor, Lori Richards. Definitely, it was one of my first thoughts when I started seeing here what was going on was the support the kids were getting.
We appreciate all the support from the whole community, for everyone, every time we work out the book, we try to help them. Have time to work on the paper, the kids are the hardest working kids you'll ever see. They're in that Veritas room, which is too small, hours and hours and hours, every night of press news, all day Saturday, they're writing and interviewing and photographing and editing and it's absolutely remarkable and I think we've taken a big jump and hopefully we'll continue to take another big jump. I've got a lot of interest and I'm super excited about what they're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you too.
A lot of our core staff couldn't be here tonight because they had other things to do, but we really were a strong working team, we're a hardworking team and there's a lot of us, it's not, definitely not just Caroline and I that make this happen, so.
Yeah. We also, during the walkout, schools were suspending kids who walked out and we were approached by Dr. Bucky saying that we could do this and we wouldn't be in trouble and that they just wanted us to do it safely. So that really meant a lot because other schools in Massachusetts were suspending kids for walking out and punishing them, so.
Really?
Yeah. And around the country too.
I think you guys are going in the right direction. Remember, the youth of the world matters. Your opinions matter. Always remember that.
So what happens on Thursday?
This Thursday? Oh, oh, so we, I forgot, we, so every year Veritas is invited to attend the New England's Classic Press or NESP Association Award Ceremony, which means we've been nominated for something or we've won something. And you have to kind of apply into it, so we have to send a copy of each of our issues from this year. And then we send in personal awards, so Lucy and I send in our Byline columns, we send in news articles, we send in features articles, sports articles. Sports photos usually win because our photographers are really good, so we usually win a feature photo, sports photo, something like that. You can also send in for specific spreads, which is kind of like layout pages. So we go down and I think we're class three, so last year we won third place in New England, best high school newspaper for our school size. But in previous years we've won first, hoping for first this year. But we usually go down to Boston. We go as early as we can because before the award ceremony, they do forums, which can be from anything, it's like how to write a lead, how to write a good news article, investigative journalism. They have like three classes beforehand and then the award ceremony afterwards. So you're kind of intermingling with kids from all over New England, which is really valuable. And we've met every year Rockland High School, which is our biggest competition, and me and the other editors always talk to them and it's interesting to see.
Aren't they Veritass too?
Yeah. They're the Veritass, which is incorrect.
Correct.
The truth, so they're saying the truth, that's okay. But so, yeah, it's a really good day and then we usually come back the same day, but the bridge is being operated on, so.
Right, so, and isn't finished until Friday, we hear?
Yes.
We're very proud.
We are, yes. Thank you so much.[952.82][952.82](APPLAUSE).
I think Veritas is very interesting, very topical. Don't always agree with some of the points, but they're always interesting.
They probably welcome that.
Yeah, they do.
You guys, you do a very good job.
It's a beautiful thing.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next guidance. Now, I'm gonna give up my seat. Any of us, you know what, maybe, do you mind moving over to that side? And we'll let them take these, yeah, that'd be great. Sorry. Come over this way.
I can stand behind you.
No, no, no. Whatever you want.
You can be a bright part of us Natalie, just like.
Absolutely, no. Sharing the space.
Well, unless you're afraid of my presence. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks for allowing us to come in and talk to you about, fill you in on exactly what happens in guidance. In your package, we've included what we feel is a comprehensive list of the duties and responsibilities of our office. Pretty much we have a revolving door, metaphorically speaking. We have, guidance is sort of like the hub of the school. We interface with students, family, faculty, administration, colleges and universities, trade schools, outside organizations and the community in which we live and work. And also included in our packet, just so you know, is our most recent school profile and information about the Ask a School Counselor's model, just for you to look at and see.
So as Kathy introduced, we did share a list of our roles and responsibilities that change quite, quite often throughout the year. Obviously, depending on the time of the season, we focus more on different roles and responsibilities. So this is not necessarily in any order of a timeline or in order of importance, but obviously in the fall, we are registering new students, we are doing a lot of scheduling, rescheduling, starting off with the PSAT right away, getting some initial AP letters out to the families, working on SSD to try to get special accommodations for students who are taking any of the college board tests, whether that be the PSAT, SAT, AP. So there's certain things that, and we go to the college fair over on the Cape. So there's certain things that kick off the year. And then obviously there's the MCAS exams and AP exams and social, emotional and academic counseling throughout the year. And right now, what our real big focus on is the scholarship, the big local scholarships we're just due on Friday, Friday afternoon. And we, whatever the grading comes around, we work on getting the report cards out. Obviously, as Kathy mentioned, the term revolving door, you know, it's actually kind of funny, we have to say that anytime we try to have a meeting, we put this huge like fluorescent sign on the door that says, closed, locked, don't come in. But obviously like kids come by and we're like, oh, I gotta see her or I gotta see that. So it's, it is, it is revolving. Someone even came in yesterday and asked for a pool noodle. We don't have those in our office, but that'll just show you how if people don't know what they want, they come to guidance and ask if we have it. So a lot of what we do is almost triage, you know, with that student, we said, well, we don't have that, but maybe you could check in the pool or in, or, or I don't know, Dan's Pharmacy or something like that. Or if a student is in some kind of social, emotional crisis or health crisis, then we would of course speak with them and calm them down to the level that they needed to be, but then hook them up with an outside counselor or the, or DCF worker or our school social worker or the, or the administration. And then sometimes it would just be reaching out to the parents or another student or something, but we always do help them. We can't always help right away, sometimes it has to do a lot of research or digging or working with outside community members, but we do our best to help them in any way that we can.
And I just wanted to highlight something that Courtney and Kathy both touched on, but an additional consideration in understanding the role of the school counselor is that we're almost never able to accomplish anything by ourselves alone. We're constantly in communication with people inside and outside the building, every step of the way takes collaboration and information gathering from a lot of different sources. So something that might seem as basic as a schedule change actually has a lot of behind-the-scenes work because a student comes in to ask for a schedule change and then we contact the teacher and then maybe the liaison and then we call home to the parent and maybe arrange a meeting with everybody and then possibly run it by administration. So each step of the way, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So we just wanted to give you some of that background as you consider the list that we gave you in the packet.
So in, in the interest of brevity, because I've sat through myself many of these types of presentations and they're A, boring usually and, and they take forever to go through. I mean, I'm just being honest.
I think she's saying that and that. I think Tim coached her on that one. How's that?
I think that one of the things that we wanted to do was something a little different and this is the mystery of the hat. So you have in your packets all the information that we've given you as far as what we do and what we did was we're gonna have everybody pick, ask the questions that you're interested in, okay? So why don't you pass your hat and take, we can take one or two questions. If you want to ask a question about that particular topic, that's fine. If you would prefer not to, that's okay. Or if there are any other questions that come to mind during this discussion that you would like to ask.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
If wanted to. How do you work on the financial aid guidance for students and parents?
But it's very interesting. Courtney does a, she's done the FAFSA before. I've sat with, with students. Usually we try to make sure that they've A, signed up for it, that they have their username and PIN number because the parents have to have the same thing. If it's a student who comes in and the parents are willing to send in all their information, then I can sit with them and go over, you know, and look and see, because sometimes there are these little checks that something's not filled out completely and sometimes it's as simple as that. So you just have to kind of problem solve and figure out like what it is that they need at that time.
What are the problems around the FAFSA, do you see? If parents don't participate?
Well, that's a problem. If they don't participate, they really need to participate on some level. But what happens sometimes, it's, it might be that the name that was on the FAFSA for the parent number one is not the same name that was used on their tax return. So it's kind of matching that up because they have a tool that inputs things from their taxes and, and sort of populates the areas correctly. But if there's some type of a problem and it's not the same information, then it won't process it.
So in the first half of the year, it's a lot of parent meetings to help parents understand what exactly do they need to be doing and try to reach as many parents as we can and then...
And the MIFA.
Yes, and the MIFA, we have a MIFA presentation where we have a MIFA expert coming in to speak to our parents one night. And then the second half of the year is really helping students with the applications, troubleshooting if there are issues with FAFSA. And then when they start getting their financial aid packages, a lot of times we'll have parents and students in for meetings to help them understand what are grants, what are loans, what exactly are you getting, what are smart choices that you could be making.
Okay, even though I live with her, she doesn't tell me what MIFA is, so.
Oh, it's a Massachusetts Educational Financing Association.
Authority.
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 And every year they have people who come down, who specifically reach out to schools and come down and will help educate parents. They have all the information, they've got a great slideshow or, not slideshow, PowerPoint. And what they do is with all this information and they also will allow us sometimes to post it on our own website, this information is how parents can get a hold of them. So it's pretty, it's pretty comprehensive and they're very good.
I think one of the questions that you might have been leading to was even talking about our families who are not residents of the US that don't have a social security number. And those students cannot fill out the, the FAFSA, which is the free application for federal student aid, which basically is the kickstart for any kind of scholarships or grants or any kind of financial aid that you would get from a college. So unfortunately, our students who do not have a social security number do not qualify for aid. Some colleges will accept a student anyway and they just would have to pay out of pocket for it, for that, whereas other schools don't take that. So that's a challenge and we have reached out to Cape Cod Community College as well as other colleges to make a connection to try to see how we can best help our students because we've made, I think, great strides to help these, this population, help them to graduate from high school and the next step, which I know that Kelly Koonies were helping us work with, but is to helping them get into college, which is, would be the next step.
No, I think that that's essential where we put the effort into these children, they make sure that they have at least as close and equal opportunity as the others.
Exactly. So there are so many questions, three questions in here, I don't know which one. I know. I was gonna say, she's looking at Bob. There's a question that I didn't find in here that I'd love to ask about how many students do you each tend to, or assign to you, or?
I would say, it, every year it fluctuates. We've kept the same name, last names, and it fluctuates and so some years, I would say we have between 170 and 200 each, around there.
Each. Okay. So then that next question is how do you possibly assist those students with filling out jobs?
I am so glad, I am so glad you said.
And scholarship applications and scheduling and course selection, how do you manage that?
Well, it's hard and, and I would say that, and I'm gonna let these two speak, they've been guidance counselors at our school counselors at other places. I want you, and before we leave tonight, I'm gonna make a push for thinking about a testing coordinator because we've reached the crisis point with all the testing that is done in the main office through the, you know, MCAS, all the testing that goes out of our office, it is so time-consuming. And people who don't do it think it's not rocket science, but it is rocket science in many ways, but that's, that's, you know, it's a very hard, and you two have, want to speak about your caseloads?
Well, so I can say, I used to work up on the North Shore at PBD Veterans Memorial High School. I had about twice as many kids on my caseload at that time, but the school was very, very large. There was over, like, there was like 3,000 students in the high school, I'm sure there's more now. There were seven guidance counselors and so we, our caseload was very large, but working in a small school versus a large school is night and day. And I have to say, when I was coming from a large school to a small school, I was really looking forward to working with the students more because I thought that that's what would happen. But unfortunately, with a large school versus a small school, there's less staff to cover all of the same amount of duties. So unfortunately, a lot of those administrative duties fall into our laps or other people's laps and it takes up a lot, it does take up a lot of time. So unfortunately, I, I don't see my students here as much as I would like to and as much as I did in my past district because there, my job was to be a guidance counselor and I chose to be an SSAT coordinator because I got a stipend to do so. But, but that's not the key, you know, there's, there's so many administrative duties that we have to spread over a thin amount of people that it does, it's, it's hard to meet their needs and, and you know, even just with the academic counseling, we get progress reports at the end of every quarter or mid-quarter. And ideally, we're supposed to be meet, and I'm looking at my principal, I'm saying we're supposed to be meeting with all these students and encouraging them to do better and, and unfortunately, that doesn't always happen because there's other things that we are doing. And obviously, we do our best to meet with them and we see our students, but, but sometimes there's other things that have to get done, so it's, 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 it's hard.
And I would echo what Courtney said, this is my first year and I'm coming from Quince Orchard High School, which is right outside DC in Montgomery County, Maryland, and very similar to Peabody High School, a very large school. And very similar to Peabody High School, a very large school. I had almost 300 kids on my caseload. But none of the testing was in guidance and that made a significant difference with the exception of AP testing, but that was a separate stipend position and that was two counselors who did it outside of school hours. So I do see the difference there.
Do you have any other questions?
No. I'll pass it along, but thank you very much. I know you guys do a lot during your day and I can only imagine. But, okay, sorry, sorry.
You know, we're very lucky.
He told me to pass it along.
Well, I'm, I'm going to do mine because I'm delighted to have received it. I was at NIS this morning and I saw some notices regarding working with families of ELL and immigrant kids. My serendipitous choice was please address immigration concerns, working with students and families. You started to a little bit.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's something that we have, I know Anita and I are on a different schedule. So our goals this year was to work more closely with the ELL population. It seems like over the past, you know, eight years maybe, we've gotten our, a group of students who have gotten through high school and have actually graduated. A group has graduated where we used to lose them along the way because for financial, you know, they had to work to help support their families. And so it was really difficult for them to come to school and not be out there helping to support their families. So we would lose them. But now the problem is that they are graduating, but they're not going anywhere. They're go, you know, they're, they're, some of them are going to places, but some of them, it's hard because of financial hardship. The FAFSA, you can't fill it out. And what happens, what happens is the FAFSA controls all the federal monies that the government gives to all the schools and then the schools decide who to give it to. But if you're an ELL student or you're not documented, you, you're not able to take part in that. So it, schools, I think, are coming around a little bit more. What we're trying to do is an alliance with Cape Cod Community College. And, and you've done some really good research.
Yeah, and so we're working on trying to figure out how we can address some of these concerns by coordinating with Cape Cod Community College. So there's the college and career piece. But I think this year in particular, there's also been a big social, emotional piece in working with our ELL students, particularly with TPS being revoked and DACA. Nobody knows what's going to happen and a lot of our students are impacted by that. So we've been working with the ELL teachers to identify the students who might be affected and with our administration and with the teachers, but that's sort of another piece. There's the college and career, but then there's the social, emotional piece as well.
Does it, does it motivate you or frustrate you that you're going against the national tide at the moment?
Gosh, I think it motivates us.
Good.
Yes.
I think it does, but, but I think that we've spent time in the classrooms. All of us have gone into, into the classrooms at different times to talk to the students. Once we went in to talk to them because we wanted them to realize that you, you don't have to stop your education at this point when you graduate from high school. You don't have to necessarily go into landscaping or the traditional careers that people have chosen when they haven't had an option to go to college or pursue it. We've had students and we wanted them to start thinking about the fact that they're bilingual. And they, if they are, go into a career and get their college degree, they are going to be so sought after for that. And you know, I think there's a lot of the kids who are really smart and it's so sad when they get to that point and they, they feel that they can't go anywhere after that. So we've been looking at different ways of encouraging them to at least to go to four Cs, to start the process, meet the people, go over and talk to them. They have all these programs available for kids to at least help with their English learning and then placing them, you know, in the courses that they would be able to do.
That's great.
Oh, yeah, they're very, very good.
Amazing program. And I think obviously we're in, we're hoping that the new Innovations Pathway Program, because obviously the, the whole, the idea behind it is to expose the L students. And I know that the program isn't all Ls, but it's the majority of Ls in the lottery system. But I, I think that it'll be really interesting to have them be exposed to these different programs and internships with the extra support in hopes that they will, will connect them with schools and, and careers eventually that they can really benefit from.
Listen, I think this is great. I think the district in the past few years has really taken big strides in servicing these kids, if that's the right way to word it. And it's nice to hear that you guys are working within that process as well.
It's their fun. It's a fun, it's a next group.
Thank you first, I want to say, for being guidance counselors. The guidance department is, is something I really, really care about. And my, the question I pull, I think segues into where my thoughts were, which were along the line with Jen. But one thing, I want to ask a question first and then I'll go into what my question is. Well, that makes no sense, right? On average, how many times do you see one student a year?
Ah, it depends.
And, and be honest.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm looking for something here.
There are some students I see once a year when I do the schedules. I don't, I always invite them back and I have candy in my office because I hope that encourages them to come back. Because my, I've been beating this drum for a long time, but connections that you form with students are the foundation for us knowing what's going on in their, in their, with their population, with the recent, recent things that have happened, you know, in our community. I felt really bad because we didn't know that was going on. I didn't know. And I just feel like if you have those, you develop those connections with students, that sometimes those things do come out when you're spending time with them. Not always, but sometimes they do.
Personally, as a, and as a school committee member, I'd like to see students be able to see guidance at least and be required at a minimum four times a year. Why that number? I have my reasons. But the question I pulled out of the box was collaborate with social worker, outside providers, therapists, doctors to support students in school, which was along what you were referring to. We've had clusters and things like that and students, sometimes they're looking for someone that doesn't judge them. And I think guidance is a big part of that. They're, sometimes they can't talk to their parent about that. They don't know what they want to do and be and whatever. But they need an independent person that, you know, just looks at them, the individual student, what they're good at, what they're not good at, what they're struggling with, and just have candid conversations. And I feel like that's something that we could do a better job at now. I'm saying that and everybody's thinking, you know, well, we only have three for the high school and how many students is that? 534. Well, I think, I, I think that's something we really should try to put in the budget to increase that number so that we can get closer to you all being able to spend more time. One would be for the testing. See if we can't outsource that or bring in an individual for that because testing, we know, is very important to us. I think heaping on guidance, while guidance can't even see students that they really need to see and help them plan their life and career, because that's what you do. I mean, that's what happens. I think that's important as I think that's something we really need to address and move towards that as quickly as we can without letting anything get lost in the shuffle. And that's, again, something I feel strongly about. I have three kids gone through the Nantucket High School, Nantucket School System from grades, you know, kindergarten to college. And I've seen all sides of it. You know, you have that one student that really doesn't need all that time and effort. That's my Whitney, okay? And then you have my Josh who needed a lot of that. He did not get it, but he needed a lot of that. And then you had my Jasmine who is a little bit of both of those type thing. But I, I, I want you guys to know that there are quite a few of us that's sitting on this committee that support you and support guidance and we know how important it is. And I think we should have some really candid conversations about how we can make it better, to make it better for our students. Because you will, and I think you do, like you said, would be able to pick up on some of these things and prevent some of these things, you know, if you had the time to do it. And I think that's important.
One thing, if I can just say, is we, I feel like we've been talking as a district is making those connections. And that, I feel like, you know, also relates to, you know, the safety and security aspect that I'm on the subcommittee and I hear of the horrible school shootings and you think like, wow, did that person have a guidance counselor or somebody that they could connect with, you know? And, and I agree that it should almost be mandatory for our students to see guidance a certain number of times a year because I feel like there are students that aren't going to necessarily come and talk to you, but they need that, you know, like, okay, we have an appointment. You need to come sit down and talk to me. They need that added help to come in the door, you know? And I feel like having a set number of visits would help, help that, you know? I really agree with Zona and I, I feel like we need to look at ways to increase our, our guidance support because it's evident in today's world, our students need that social, emotional support.
Students going out to the future and what they're going to, you know, you're helping push them in the right direction that sometimes they just need.
We've been very lucky too because we've had, you know, we have had some really good relationships with students and, and watched them grow, you know, since they were freshmen and sort of to, to the point where they're graduating from high school. And, and they've just, they've grown and changed so much and it's such a gratifying experience, you know, to see that. But we just don't get to see them all. And granted, like you said, not everybody needs to be seen all the time.
But I think dealing with, you guys are very different than the relationships, particularly with teachers because that's always got a grade involved. But you guys are sort of neutral to the whole situation and the social, emotional concerns of our students, I think, are always, it's as important as grades, although I don't think, that doesn't show up in the Boston Globe when they list our scores, but I certainly endorse what you guys have said. And I think more guidance and perhaps more help would be very useful.
Yeah, I think it would help Jen out too because she has a big old MCAS basket in her room. It's, 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 it's definitely forced to be reckoned with, the testing part of it.
And you didn't even have to specifically ask for additional staffing.
I know.
Came out of us.
I know.
Well, I appreciate everything that you said. I think that's a really good idea. I mean, I think about those kids that are real, the cases that are really hard to crack and they always come in with that chip on their shoulder. And I, I just picked Kathy's brain about this a couple of weeks ago with a specific student and I'm like, how am I going to get to her? And she said, call her out on it. Why, you know, why are you so, and, and I, I didn't have to. But she, actually I had a meeting with her today and I signed her up for the SATs. And I feel like every time I see her, I don't think that's a student that if I didn't do it myself with her, she wouldn't have signed up for the SATs. So I feel like every meeting that I see her, it really is, you know, chipping away and she's going to be a senior next year and I, I can't wait to see where, where she goes. But if I didn't have that time with her today to go over, you know, and ask her some of the funny questions about her favorite classes or coursework and stuff, then, then I, that, that wouldn't have been done. So I like that idea, so.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
It's important.
So thank you for your support.
Anything else?
I'm, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want your hat back?
Save it for next time.
Thank you.
Was it, wasn't boring this time, was it?
No, not at all. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. You got three.
Okay, moving on. Michelle Brady with the special education update. Michelle, you want to come up?
Sure. Oh, because you're going to do that? I'll do it for you. Oh, that's so nice. I was going to sit down here and push the button. So I'm not sure I'm a creative in the guidance group. I don't have a hat. I'm sorry. I do have a PowerPoint. So thank you for having me. Joining my first year here so far and here to give you an update on students with disabilities primarily, including students on IEPs and students on 504 plans. So I'm going to go through the PowerPoint first and then also, I know that I also had a separate report that I gave you. And then if there's any questions from that, we can go over that. If that's okay?
Just to save my neck.
Sure.
All of these here, so we can just turn the pages here and know what's going on.
Should be able to follow on the PowerPoint. Yes. Okay. And ask me any questions anytime. Okay? All right. All right, so this is where we stand in terms of the percentages of students on IEPs in the Nantucket Public School District compared to the state average. So you can see that the state average for the past four years has been pretty consistently at 17%. And the district's percentage right now is about 14.2 for, for this year. Last year was a little bit less and then in 2015, I don't have my, I don't have my data. But 2015, it was, I think it was 13.9%. It's hard to read that there. So it just, you know, it is a snapshot in time. When I was doing this, I put it for May 1st. You know, kids were moving into the district, kids were moving out, kids were getting identified on an IEP. But that just gives you an idea for right there. So I'm glad that we are under the state. I think 17% is high, but Massachusetts does tend to have a high rate of identification of students with disabilities compared to other states. So I'm pretty happy with the 14% or so. Okay. So the next part, I put the numbers there so it is easier to read. So this is by school. So I have preschool broken out separately. So this is again, as of like last week. So not to be alarmed by the preschool number, the 57% of students in preschool at the Nantucket Elementary School are on IEPs because our preschool program is designed to be a peer model preschool program for students with disabilities. So we had 42 last week and of the 42, we had 24 on IEPs. I believe today we have 44 students on, students in preschool. But we try to have a, and we have one of our preschool teachers who's been here forever, Kim, in the audience. But basically, we have three preschool classrooms and we try to strive for a seven with disabilities to eight without disability ratio. And then we also have another sub-separate preschool classroom. So those encompass the 24 students currently on IEPs. By the end of the school year, we are anticipating to have 28 on IEPs. So the thing about preschool is it grows throughout the year because as students are turning three years old, we are evaluating them and finding them eligible. Which is another thing to think about preschool is that it's not just one year because we take kids at age three, we take kids at age four, some students at age five are still in preschool. So it's almost like two and a half years for grade levels. At the element, oh, wait, can you go back? So at the elementary school, we have 10% on IEPs, the intermediate school 11.3%. At the middle school, we have 15.7% and at the high school, 15.1.
Why the difference?
That is a good question. Why is it going up?
Why does it go up in the?
Yeah. So it's a good question. I have a couple of theories. One of the things I was doing today until 5:30 was doing my coordinated program review. As part of that, I'm looking at a lot of data for the state that's due in a couple of weeks. And one of the data collection I had to do was to look at referrals for eligibility. So we looked at all the students that were referred from October 1st through December 31st, which is kind of a high, you know, frequent time for students to be evaluated because they're, the school year started, they're not making progress. So of that particular amount, we had a high amount of students that were referred in middle school and high school.
Because they were moving into the system or?
No, not necessarily. But when you are referring more at a certain grade level, you're probably going to have a higher amount of students that are found eligible. We also had a fair amount that were not found eligible at that point. I think one of the factors, there's a couple of other factors involved too. One of the factors is that at the elementary and the intermediate school, we have interventionists. So we have special- So we have specialists that will provide specialized math, specialized reading without having to be on an IEP as you get into upper grades. If you don't have those intervention programs for struggling students, that's when they're gonna be referred possibly to see if they have a disability, if they're not making progress. The other factor here is that it's very difficult to determine a specific learning disability, which is typically the most frequent disability, um, when they're young. Okay, so when, because we know that children will read at different ages and it's still considered typical or normal development. You might have a child that's five years old that can read. You might have a typical child who still can't read at age seven. Doesn't mean that they're disabled, there's just a different profile. So by the time the kids are second, third, fourth grade, that's when we can really start to understand if there is a learning disability or not because, um, because of the typical, you know, time for them to learn how to read. The other factor is that with students who, um, are English language learners, we can't really say they have a disability unless we know that they have a disability in their own language. So for them, again, they're getting a lot of support, they might be getting intervention. And if they've been here for several years and they're still not making progress, then we're gonna look at, well, now, does this rise to the level of disability? Because I know if I went to another country and I didn't know their language, I'm not disabled, I just don't know their language. We have to give them time to learn the language.
It's difficult to determine which is the
Exactly.
controlling factor.
Right.
I remember that in the middle school.
Right.
It's tough.
Right.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, who's making the referrals specifically in the middle school and high school? Because I think at NES and NIS, when they're with one teacher all day, it might be a little bit more consistent or easier to, you know, see trends, but as they're changing classes consistently.
Right.
Who's making the referrals?
So for that time period I talked about from October one until December thirty-first, which actually is the time when we got the consents back from the parents. We had of twenty students, um, we evaluated them for an initial evaluation for an IEP. We actually evaluated twenty-one. One of those was from early intervention, so that one was not included in my reports. But of the other twenty, one was from preschool screening. And eight other ones were from school child study teams. That left the remaining, um, eleven from parents.
So at the upper level, that's what?
So at the upper level.
When we see that increase.
Most of those.
Those are coming from parents.
No, um, a lot of those were coming from the school.
Yeah, the child studies.
Child studies.
I know.
Yeah.
The middle school.
Maybe you could explain child studies.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with.
Child study, the schools do it a little bit differently in each school, but basically it's when teachers have a concern about students' learning and they bring it to a team or, um, and they talk about the student and then they might refer from there to, um, for an evaluation. So we're trying to move towards a more, um, response to intervention model. It is occurring in, in pockets throughout the district where a, a teacher is concerned, they are providing research-based instruction, they are meeting with the team, they are collecting data, they come back to the team and then after, you know, at least two months of really good data and tiered interventions, then they make that determination to refer to, um, for an IEP.
Yeah, I think in the middle school, I think I'm speaking out of turn. The teachers, because they're working in groups and you have four, five, six people who have the same student are less hesitant to refer when they agree on what they're seeing. So I think you probably get more referrals starting in the middle school.
So for instance, the, the sixth or seventh grade or eighth grade team meets together.
Oh, yeah.
And they're just discussing the progress of the students
Yep.
in their classes and then they can say, well, this child is having trouble in science and then that's how they start to identify.
They see it across the board, they're less hesitant to, to ask for a referral.
So we, so of the school referrals, um, five were from the middle school, which is kinda high. Um, and of those, um, the other interesting thing is though, of all the nine from the school, five were eligible and four were not eligible. So, well, so what we wanna be doing is we wanna be identifying those students that are eligible, that are struggling, that have a disability. I mean, the whole thing about special education is, you know, we go through a flow chart. Number one, they need to have a disability. I think I have a slide on that, but we'll hold on that. And the, number two, they need to not be making progress in the curriculum. So you can have a disability and making progress and you don't need, you know, any plan. And that's obviously where we wanna go, but recognizing that that's not gonna work for every student with a disability. So those are some thoughts in terms of why the difference is. So, and this is just a number and again, a snapshot in time. After I did that, I think this, you know, one student, um, might have been, you know, terminated from an IP or moved out, but it's kinda striking the progression of time. I mean, we want, um, when students are at upper levels of high school, we wanna maybe transition them to a 504 plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we wanna be catching these kids maybe a little bit earlier. So, okay. So the, these are the type of disabilities that we have in our district as a whole. And so you can see the biggest one is specific learning. The state is approximately around forty percent. So, um, but we also have a high amount of kids with, um, health, a health disability, um, which we have fourteen percent. That includes the, um, diagnosis of ADHD. And autism is a little bit low because we have students that are at the preschool that have a diagnosis of autism, but they were determined eligible under developmental delay. So we do have more students, um, with autism in our district. Neurological, um, could include a, a traumatic brain injury, um, intellectual impairment, is, uh, you know, eight percent. Communication, those would be kids that, um, are having either receptive language issues, expressive language, or sometimes articulation issues. Developmental delay, that's the catch-all that Massachusetts has. That's for students, um, up to age nine that are delayed in any one area. So that is specifically used at the elementary school and preschool. You might have a, a child that's eight or about to be nine at the intermediate school, but, um, that's what that disability is.
Are ELLs in all of those categories?
Yes. Maybe not neurological, but I could, I'd have to go and do a cross-reference, but, um, yeah, we try to work, you know, together and with the services. They can have a disability and they can also, um, be getting English language, you know, learner services. And again, you know, we, we wanna make sure that, um, we are identifying what's a disability and not just a language difference. So this is, um, a little, just similar info, but broken down by school. And, um, I included preschool under the elementary school there. I also have another category and that includes, um, a student that's homeschooled, includes, uh, students that are placed out of district fund by the district that are in residential schools and also students that are placed by their parents but are still eligible for an IP, um, in, uh, private schools on the island or off the island. So again, it's, you know, it's typical to have a little bit more emotional and, uh, possible health as students get older. Those, and, and also it's more typical again to have the communication and developmental delay disabilities when they're younger. Okay. Um, so this is combining students, um, with IP, on IEPs and 504. So those are considered students with disabilities and I will explain what the difference is. So now when you look at the whole, um, for preschool, it's the same. We don't have any students on the 504 plan in preschool, but the other ones, it's, um, a little bit higher, um, percentage when you look at 504 plans. The next slide talks about what the 504 plans are in terms of each, um, school. Shout out to guidance, clearly. Because they, um, are very instrumental in overseeing, uh, the 504 plans. So, um, this is a, what would be a typical, you know, uh, profile in a school district, 504 plans.
Can I just?
Yeah, sure.
Can you just, um, remind us the difference between IEPs and 504 plans?
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide is.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So basically the main difference is if you're, um, you, they, they both need to have a disability, a documented disability, not just need extra help. They're both are legal contracts, but the main difference is for a 504 plan, it's a student that just needs accommodations and for an IEP, it's, you need specialized instruction. So, um, a lot of districts will put students with ADHD on a 504 plan because maybe they just need certain accommodations in the classroom. Whereas for specific learning disabilities, they might need an IP because they need a specific way of being taught how to read, how to write, how to do math. They're both, um, we both, we, for both of them, we need, uh, parent consent to evaluate them. We do a more comprehensive evaluation for an IEP. That's with our school psychologists. Sometimes for a 504 plan, they bring documentation from their doctor, from their therapist. We can't require that, so we also have to kinda do some type of evaluation if needed. The 504 plan does not need to be signed off by the parents, but the IEP does, even though they need consent to go on a 504 plan. The nice thing about a 504 plan is that it can be lifelong. They, students can take it with them to college because it's an accommodation plan. Um, and again, that's another reason why I'd like to, you know, maybe when they're eleventh grade, twelfth grade, if they're making progress and they don't need specialized instruction, can we start transitioning students to 504 plans? IEPs, you, there's only, um, certain disability categories that are recognized. That was in that little, uh, circle. Uh, there's thirteen, um, including, well, fourteen, I guess you've included multiple disabilities. 504 plans, it's broader. It used to be that a 504 plan was like a lifelong disability that impacted speaking and hearing, but the federal regulations have changed a little bit.
Or vision.
And the 504 plan was originally, it's under section 504. It was originally designed to provide equal access and avoid discrimination. Originally designed for the workplace and employment. And so it's really about, um, but students on IEPs are still covered under section 504 with the civil rights and everything else, but, um, but they don't go on a 504 plan because the IP is more comprehensive. A 504 plan might be a one-page accommodation. IP is like thirteen, fifteen pages, so. Probably more than you need to know about 504 plans and IEPs, but. All right. So, um, I believe, uh, this is for, um, Mr. Sorteck. You had asked about out-of-district placements. So I was, you know, pretty pleased that it's been fairly stable since, um, for the past eight years. A little blip there in twenty thirteen. Last year we had seven, this year we have eight point two. That's because one of, um, our students had, um, came back from an out-of-district placement. You know, the out-of-district placement, we try to go in least restrictive environment where the student can make progress. But being on an island, it's difficult. We don't have day schools. When I was in Mashpee, it could send the students to the Cape Cod Collaborative School or other schools. Here, it's really important for us to have fully staffed programs to provide for the student needs. Because, you know, you hate to have a parent have to have their child go to a residential school. I believe strongly in our public education and, um, that students do learn best with peers and be as included as, as possible. When students do go, like I said, you know, we did bring a student back. We do try to, um, you know, kinda reintegrate them. Um, so that's kinda where we're at.
Special programs in the last few years to accommodate a lot of those and they've been great. Actually, this is better than holding even when you consider that our population overall continues to rise significantly, but this is holding its own. I'm assuming to a great degree because of the programs that we instituted within the schools.
And I can't take any credit for that because I just started, but, um, yes, we've had consultants come that have really, um, helped our teachers to replicate some of these day school programs. Um, and we have, you know, good resources here.
And had some people, staff who just are good at.
Yes.
Created those programs.
Yeah.
Have gone above and beyond.
Yeah. I mean, for a small district, I'm really impressed with the number of, um, teachers that we have that are certified in Wilson reading or Orton Gillingham. It's very unusual and it's, it's been great. So, yeah. Okay.
Dare I ask? I'm gonna, you know I am. Approximately, what is our average off-island placement cost?
You don't wanna know.
I do, well, actually.
Oh. We have several that are two hundred thousand and two dollars, two hundred and two thousand dollars. We have some that are seventy-six thousand dollars. So, I mean, I'd have to do the math.
Pretty significant.
But, yeah, because they're residential.
Right.
Yeah. And we also support the students to return home. We fund their travel to come home to visit their parents. And that's very pricey, so, yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, you know, I don't know the exact number. I do know that, you know, residential is, it's expensive.
I, I remember when, when we started to address those kinds of things many years ago, how shocking the prices were understandable because we can't offer all of those accommodations here. And as you said, we can't be bussing kids to those
Right.
accommodations elsewhere on the island. You know, it goes back a ways, but it's always been very costly.
Yes. So the, this is just a little, um, four-year comparison of number of initial evaluations. So, um, last year, there was a lot of initial evals. I don't know why. This year, you know, approaching that, but you can see that the, the number has increased from twenty fifteen. And, um, hard for me to say, is it parents requesting evaluations, if it's, um, child study teams? But, you know, that snippet of time there, it looked like, you know, about fifty percent, um, for the time that I looked at for this year. So, just so, so that you know, um, and we, we do have two, um, school psychologists we're very fortunate to have here that are, um, processing that and Kim and her group also, um, all the preschool evaluations, which is a lot.
Did you say that approximately, I don't remember the exact number you mentioned, but approximately half of them actually result in IEPs?
I think I had, uh, twelve were eligible out of the twenty that were evaluated total. Yeah. A little bit more than half. Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Um.
How long does the process take from referral to actually receiving?
Good question. So we have five days from the time I get a request, I want an evaluation to determine my, you know, eligibility for special ed. I have five days to send out the consent to the parents. Five days whether it's from the child study team, five days whether it's from, uh, the parent. The early intervention is a little bit, um, different because those rules don't really apply until a child turns three. So after the parent gets the consent and they sign it, we date stamp it when we receive it. As soon as we receive it, we have thirty school working days to complete the evaluation. I just did the date on that. And, um, then from there, we have another fifteen days, school working days to complete, uh, to meet and present an IP if a student's eligible. So from the time we get the consent back, we have forty-five school days, which is about two months. And then, um, the parent can read the IP if they sign it, you know, we implement services right away. But it, it takes a couple of months. Yeah.
When you say, uh, initial evaluation, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the first time a student is being evaluated?
Yeah, well, first, they, they could have been evaluated like three years ago, but they're not on an IP, so it's sort of like looking at it brand new. So for the most, most part, they're the very first time.
And of that ninety-five for two thousand eighteen, do you have a ballpark of the breakdown of what age group? If not.
I have for those three months, from October to December. We had, at the elementary school, we had three. At CPS and NIS, we had about nine. At CPS and NIS, we had about nine. At the high school, we had about three. So add up to 20.
So, I'm sorry, so what is, sorry, what does a 95 come from?
95 are the number of evaluations. So we've had 95 students, but I just told you a snippet of time during the three months. I don't have the rest of that data.
But like, there's a group of that 20, and then there's another group that makes it 75.
Right, so this was just the 20 that we got those consents assigned during that timeframe, during that three-month time. I mean, we're still, are still evaluating and having meetings until the last day of school. So, like, I won't know until then.
And I think the part of getting parent consents is often not as logically easy as you would think it would be. So that can slow things down. The testing that needs to be done in the course of an evaluation is extensive. So these things take more time than you would think.
More familiar than you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing, which I don't think I included on that, but I included on your report, was the number of reevaluations. So not only are we evaluating students for the first time to see if they're eligible, but for all students on IEPs, we're reevaluating them at least every three years. So that's just the initial evaluation. So our psychologists and our related services providers, our speech therapists, our PT, our occupational therapists, are very busy with the testing. I think I had, for this year, 19. Oh, wait, no. Reevals, 28 at the high school, 11 at the middle school, 14 at the intermediate, and 14 at the elementary. Those are not, oh, so I did have there for eligibility. All right. So we had, of the 95 initials, we had 30 were eligible for IEPs. So 30 out of the 95 so far are eligible. We still have 43 that are not yet done, and we had 22 that were not eligible. So I'd have to let you know at the end of June to see how many of those 43 then became eligible or not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Most of our testers full-time in-house now. I noticed that Jen Laredo's back to full-time within the district. What about the other?
So the other school psychologist was four and a half, right? But we...
Jen has been five days a week, full-time. The other is the high school psychologist was, I think, at .8.
And then, like on your little other report, the preschool evaluations are 17. So, and that's done by, mostly by the preschool staff.
And just as an aside, just in the eight years I've been here, I'm gonna look at Kim, but we had two preschool teachers. This year, we've had three. Next year, we will have four. So, you know, those numbers have gone up drastically, and that's...
And they can handle the testing that's involved as opposed to the...
Well, that's why we keep increasing.
And most of the classes don't meet on Fridays this year. So that's their testing day, meeting day, and things like that. So actually, we have, the next one is about preschool.
Yeah.
So.
It's about preschool.
So the nice thing about preschool is that we don't, you know, from, you can't identify who has a disability, who doesn't. It is an integrated preschool program. It's a great program. So I like to put pictures of kids in when I can. The next picture. Number of preschool students on IEPs. So as I mentioned, we have 24 right now. We anticipate 28 by the end of the school year. Last year, we had 23. Then we had, the two prior years, 11. These are just on IEPs, not the total. So you can see where this has gone up and down a little bit, going back to 2010. But the other thing is, that we're noting, is that the intensity of the disability seems to be increasing as well as more students that are English language learners. We are really fortunate to have Head Start is in the school building, and they are full with 20 students, and many of them come from a family where English is their second language.
Head Start being the same age level as our pre-k?
Age four, yeah. So ours are three and four. So it is, it is growing. Yeah. All right. And then my last one is just if you have any questions or comments. Oh, I did have another piece to pass out. I believe it was about just percentages of students with disabilities by schools for the past five years. Colleen would want to know about it. So I'm gonna see where it's at. But do you have... Sure. Okay. Do you have any questions? Comments?
Thank you, Michelle, for that.
Yeah, really.
Wait, some for instance.
Okay. Thank you.
Good? All right. Thank you. Thanks for having me. I love you. Thanks. All right.
Thank you, Michelle.
Committee discussions and votes to be taken. I'd like to lead off with the two school trips. The first one, Boston Museum of Science. Can we have a motion to approve?
Let's hear it.
Well, I saw a document here that I didn't recognize from the agenda. I'm trying to figure out what it was. Just trying to confuse you students.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the trip to the Boston Museum of Science.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the Veritas trip.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that.
New policies.
So I don't know if you want me to jump in, or Jen, or Zona. We did meet this week and talked about the three policies that you spoke of last week. To Tracy's question, GBEBD, which is the online fundraising and solicitations, crowdfunding, we would ask that the school committee table that because we need more answers from MASC on that. And so that wouldn't be for a vote this evening.
But I'd still like to hear Tracy's question.
Yep, please.
I just have a couple of questions that you had to table for our review, because there's a couple of things I didn't understand. Looking at the definition of crowdfunding, like go funding, pick that, get those things, including Donors Choose was a concern to me. I always, I mean, I don't know the rules of it. For cross-reference, nobody gave a shit. And I always thought it was a grant application. I don't know if any of the school teachers that have received Donors Choose, but there's quite a few of us that have, and set up more like a grant application. It's not just, this is what I want to do when you get the money. It's you have to fill out the application, state what your purpose is. It's quite super labor-intensive because they make it easy for teachers to do it on purpose, but it does go through their review. Donors Choose only works with public schools in the United States, and it is quite a few anonymous donors that do it. Like, I don't know if you ever seen Pat for it, but Stephen Colbert does something. And the things that I personally have funded, have had funded through them, have been mostly through anonymous donors. So there are people out there that they just have money, and this is what they want to do. And it's nice that they browse and they fund the project. You just can't apply for money. You have to have a specific project in mind to do it. I'm, I was a little concerned about adding steps for teachers to do this, to ask the building principals to approve it, and then we need superintendent approval and school committee approval. It seems to me to be adding paperwork and administrative to our place as teachers when it's, they've streamlined enough. And when you receive something from Donors Choose, you have to sign an affidavit of purpose and intent with your application so that whatever you receive from them is not just school, district, district, but it stays with the school, with that particular class. So for example, if I were to move out of science, the things I receive as a gun tip through students from Donors Choose, don't just stay with CPS. They stay with whoever is going to do a CPS science, sixth-grade science teacher. I just, adding to the process concerns me that a lot of places are already super full. And I would question if Donors Choose should be part of the action to get your application passed. And I also then wondered how that compares to the programs that like Stock and Town does, with Pops Tops, like do those, some gifts that need approval, where Donors Choose, I have a record of what I'm applying for, if I received it. Some of the other organizations who just get along, some, we know what happened to that one. And in the past, the district has supported teachers and encouraged them to register on a doctor's class room. I'm not sure if this policy changes that because that does not seem to be listed here. But that, to me, would also fall under that definition. So there's just, I would encourage you to talk to some teachers who have used it and see if all of these things really fit in that.
Can I, can I respond?
Do you anticipate this coming back to us?
Can I respond?
Well, let's have it over.
Mrs. Mayle, we had all those same questions, and we didn't try to list all the avenues because we know there are a lot out there. This is a policy that MASC has put before us, and I think the reason for it is there are some ramifications, or maybe there's somebody that abused that privilege, whatever. You know, we don't know all the answers yet, and that's why we're going back. I think that the concept is, when you solicit funds, it's for the school, and the school is held accountable. Yes, it's for the teacher in an individual classroom, but ultimately, it's going to be the school that's held responsible. Tax ramifications, whatever may come down, we're quite not sure. So we want to talk to MASC about it. Now, MASC puts out a lot of policies. I'm here to tell you that Nantucket Public School doesn't always adopt those policies, okay? We think about them, we think about our district, and as long as we're not in violation of some educational legislature, we don't always agree. So that's where we are at this point with them, because there are a lot of questions. You know, there are a lot of scenarios we can paint. And we just want to be sure that this is something we want to adopt, and that we're on the right track for that. Go ahead, Mike.
The only thing that I would add is that one of the reasons that MASC gave for putting forth this policy was the concern that in some places, teachers have gotten in trouble with the ethics violations in receiving. And so I think that's a very real reason for us to look at this so that we don't create a situation where teachers can unknowingly violate. So we're going back, looking further into it.
I think it's got to be sorted out because, as Zona alluded to, there's a lot of different permutations of this, and try and get it reasonably correct.
Just make sure you're here when it comes back to us. Okay.
She's always...
Even if she's not here, trust me, she'll hear about it.
Okay, so that, GBEBD is tabled.
Tabled. And we are bringing forward ILD, which is Student Submission to Educational Surveys and Research. I think the questions that people had were answered last time. And so this is offered to you for approval. Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then for JICI, I'm sorry that I wasn't here because I perhaps could have addressed some of the concerns that were raised last time. I highlighted the section that you saw purposefully because I knew that it could be of concern and may or may not be something that the school committee would want to adopt. The subcommittee, after considering, has withdrawn that piece, deleted that aspect, and so has submitted the weapons policy, the possession or use of weapons. You will note that it says ADB, not JICI. And that's because at first, we wanted to go into our A, which are foundational policies, and it will also show up as a cross-reference in JICI. We did, in the second paragraph, add personal protection spray so that, so we believe that it meets the school committee's hopes.
It just needs a comma after spray, Mike.
Yep, and it needs a period after signs.
Can we adopt this subject addition of the comma so that we're done with it tonight? Then I would move that we amend this document only to add that comma.
It's already been, I already emailed when it came out.
Okay, so the motion's been made. Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just note, I'm amazed that we have not had such a policy previously. I know it's been in our handbooks forever, weapons.
But MASC didn't even have it.
Yeah. It's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Still don't.
Still don't.
20-plus years ago, kids were bringing guns into school, and we never got into any trouble, but that's...
Well, I mean, back in the hunting days, when Doris took the rifles in at high school at the front door, right?
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 24?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Superintendent's report.
I'll be brief tonight in the enrollment. You'll see a slight increase from the April numbers. I think we went from a total of 1641 to 1644. A few numbers up in one school and down in another. That's pretty much been what's been happening month to month. I don't know if anybody has specific questions.
No, but thank you for adding that bottom portion. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Do we have trend projections? I remember years when we did those.
You know, we have had demographic studies over the, over the years. The last one was prior to the building of the new school because we needed to project out beyond, you know, two years, three years, five years, 10 years. The problem with projecting, doing a demographic study on Nantucket is that it doesn't really follow normal models. And it's such a unique outlier. I mean, what's happening here with our increases month to month is the opposite of what's happening on the mainland where numbers are going down. And I think that our numbers are probably more a result of the economy than they are anything else. And when the economy is good, you know, people are coming back or trying to live on the island because there's a lot of money to be made.
I'm not specifically requesting this, Mike, but if and when you have a chance, could go back a few more years, just out of curiosity, to show us some of those...
I've given a 20-year, I have a 20-year look that I've given out almost every year. And so I'd be happy to share that with you. And on the horizon, this is our way, Steve, of just sort of putting things on so that we can keep track. Next meeting, we'll have a facilities update. I think you'll be surprised and amazed at the number of projects that we've completed this year under Diane's watch. We'll also present a draft calendar for the 19-20 calendar. And we also are going to present a small change to the 18th, 19th that you've already approved. We're looking to add two more half-days to that calendar for a specific professional development initiative that we're, we feel is important. And then the CBA with the NTA Teacher Assistant Unit will be there for your approval. It has, I was notified today that it was approved. Unit will be there for your approval. It has, I was notified today that it was approved by the unit, just today.
So how and when will we see copies of that?
You will get them in advance of that meeting with, with the other pieces.
Is it Friday or...
Yep, Thursday, could be. And then, Mr. Horton and group will report on the NCTM conference. They just returned from Washington DC. And I think this year's group was a high school math group. We've sort of rotated that from one school to another, and so looking forward to that. In June, we will have a technology report, Karen's last technology report to the school committee. And we will do an ELL PAC update. And, and then we hope to have some news possibly at, at the June 5th meeting on the Innovation Pathways Grant.
Sorry for my, what does PAC stand for?
Parent Advisory Committee.
Ah, okay.
Okay. And then, the second June meeting, we'll have the Athletics Annual Report. So we're on, we're on a pretty good schedule. You may want to revisit the S, the School Committee Subcommittee and Task Force assignments at some point. And then I know that you had something you wanted to speak to on the horizon.
We have been approached by the select people for a position regarding recreational marijuana. I have my own particular feelings that are quite harsh and restrictive, but I think that's something we may want to discuss if some of you are more.
I think that's, it's important to put it on the agenda. I think we need to have a discussion about that.
I think so, too. I think, I think some interviews from Veritas would be useful, too, if they don't already have it on your agenda.
And, and I thought, actually, the, was it a letter from Libby or a request from Libby, was ambiguous. It started off sounding like they wanted information about what we thought about zoning, but the last sentence seems to be asking whether we wanted to have another vote on whether to make it legal or not. So I wasn't sure what we were being asked.
Well, I'm not sure either, but I think it's a monumentally bad idea, and I think...
Having it legalized.
Legalized, because it's obviously something that's, well, it's something that's very dangerous for our youth. We don't know the effects on the maturing brain because by the time they graduate high school, they're still not matured. And if we make these substances available, I think it's very dangerous. I think nobody knows the effects on pregnant women. And so I think it's very dangerous. I think it was a stupid idea. And I think it's going to make money for a lot of people, and I think it's not good for the population.
Are we gonna put it on the agenda?
We'll put it on the agenda, but I just wanted to make it on the June 5th agenda.
Because I will therefore reserve my comments until then, if for no other reason than I got to get to the chili at Sophie T's tonight. So...
Well, that's good. I'd like to bring one other thing to your attention, if I might, and that's the, the hearing on the three rotaries. And I shared that with the school committee, I think that's May 17th?
September.
I think it's May 17th. I think that there's certainly implication for our schools with those two rotaries. And I know that in the past, the individual school committee members have had differing opinions on that. But I, I would encourage us, and I know that it had been on our parking lot, so I encourage us to attend that hearing so that we can hear firsthand from the powers that be.
Yeah, I responded to Mike right away because I recall a number of years ago, when they were looking into the same idea, they actually brought the presentation to the school committee.
Yeah, I don't know that that's necessary.
I would like that to happen. Well...
I don't know that that's necessary, given that they're making the presentation. I'm not sure why we would do it if they weren't. I would agree with you. But that's the school committee's decision.
Well, if we're all there expressing our opinions, perhaps, I will put out there right now, I have very serious concerns about all but one of their proposals for four corners. It increases the number of, of crosswalks that our kids need, and my basic physics recollection from a long time ago is that objects in motion tend to stay in motion. And therefore, that those rotaries are safety concerns.
So rather, not that I, I don't disagree with you, but I'd, I would say you might want to put it on the agenda in June, following that presentation, that you need not have another presentation, but the school committee could, would be informed enough to...
Well, the school committee should respond after the presentation.
So I'll put that on the June 5th.
Okay.
Also, I've been approached by many people who wanted to hear about the Chinese trip, Chinese club trip. So I didn't know if there was space on the agenda to have the students come and share their experience.
Sure. Let's go with May member.
And...
You want that on the...
Can we do May 15?
I don't know if they'd be ready by then. Would they be ready by May 15th?
I wonder if their project's...
They may want more time.
I'm not sure. Their project, I think.
Oh, it's their project.
Yeah, their projects, I think, are due now. Yeah.
Well, we can do the tech, we can move the technology report from the 5th to the 19th. I just don't want you to stack up the 5th too much if you're going to have the marijuana and rotaries.
Or can we do the 15th? Can we do the 15th?
Graduation is on June 7th.
Why don't we, Jennifer, say we put it on the 15th and then ask if they can do, if they can...
June 9th.
Can we add them to the 15th?
And ask if they can make it?
It's two weeks away.
Okay. So the Chinese?
China.
So, John, would you give you a ping?
Diane?
I wrote to Mike Burns stating that I couldn't go to that meeting on the 17th because I would be away. And he said they are having a follow-up session in June where I could go and review. So I just wanted to mention that they are...
Oh, good. Did you, does anybody have a sense of when they might want to actually build these things?
It has to go to the mask, you know, take.
Take a while, a couple of years.
Couple of years? I feel better.
Well, I think a four-way start addresses a lot of the problems.
But even adding the one cutout means you've got the motion.
Okay, can we...
If, if I can just speak for Natalie, she left, she had a concussion yesterday in the lacrosse game, so I wanted to explain why we sort of moved her home.
She had a concussion yesterday, she had a concussion today.
Yeah. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
So moved.
I want some shout-outs.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I got some shout-outs. I cannot express in mere words, even I, how delightful the CPS band and chorus concert was. I was smiling and laughing from the first note of the band to the sixth graders dancing at the end. And kudos to all those people involved. I've emailed a number of them, but that was, so I've been missing out, I guess, by not going to those in past years. That was really delightful. Also, bit of a shout-out to the CPS School Council I attended. They put together some surveys. Kids put together some parts of them. And I think the surveys are going to be very useful. We only had time to look at the student responses, but there was some very interesting, some troubling information in there that I know Peter and Donna are going to be following up on. But the concept and the implementation of those surveys, great idea. Thank you. And finally, to show that I'm not just focusing on CPS, my bias, I haven't seen anything listed that go to the high school yet, other than sports, but Friday night is more than just, Friday night is lip syncing at NIS.
And NES.
And NES. And then the following Tuesday isn't just a chorus concert, despite the way it's listed in the calendars. It's a unified arts night. It's got a variety of things going on at 5:30. And I encourage anybody here or listening to take a shot at attending that as well. I'm done.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.